Yeah, you're not thinking. I might just want to do productive things.
Oh, no.
Yeah. Oh, sweet.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Great. It is seven o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting in order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by council member Sarah.
I'll second.
Second by council member Conrad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Community comment. Presenters are welcome to address the council for matters relevant to the City of Carver's authority for up to five minutes on matters that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Specific result requests for information may not be immediately available, but we'll do our best to follow up with the presenter sometime after the meeting. The city council should not be expected to act immediately upon requests. However, we will follow up accordingly and may schedule items for future consideration. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
You guys can introduce yourselves, give your names and your address, please.
Do I have, I just push this on?
If the light's green, you should be set.
I'm Patty Idon and we're.
Sixty-five thirty-five.
Augusta Road, Chaska.
I'm Tim Idon, and I guess you know why I started all this mess.
I recognize you're from Zoom. You're a much taller person.
Same thing. I'm no public speaker and all this, and if I say something wrong, tell me. So yell at me and I'll apologize. But I'm just here, I'm going after GRE right now, and Minnesota Valley is claiming they don't know nothing about this at all. All this trouble we had, and that's why they're supposed to have hired GRE, Minnesota Valley Electric, and they're going, huh? What are you talking about?
Their reports are.
Yeah. Didn't you watch that video? Well, yeah. They're taking the route I suggested, and I'm going, why doesn't old dairy farmer from Augusta plan your electric routes? You know, why is it, well, GRE is supposed to be doing that. And I said, they had to put in three plans, they said, yes. And they put in two plans, they know that are going to fail, and then they put in their preferred plan. So now that line that I suggested costs twenty-five million dollars. Five million dollars a mile. And their preferred plan is under two million dollars a mile. And then the same thing, it's easier to build my line than their line. And Minnesota Valley is going, oh, we don't know nothing about this. So all I'm asking is, the council, send them a letter with your experience dealing with this and GRE and Victoria and everything else. And because they're just saying, well, we have, this is just, Denzler is out of town till Thursday.
He's the CEO of Minnesota Valley Electric, and today we talked to the VP of Operations, Mike Dietz, and he was very good in talking to us, and he's willing to meet with us.
And he wants to come out privately before, and I want to get everybody together. I get the ballpark, and then Carver's here, Dahlgren's here, and all the landowners around there, and then drill them and tell them all their personal, and he says, can I just meet with you first and actually look what you're talking about? And I said, sure, anytime, twenty-four seven, I got a side-by-side, we'll take, well, we don't have to go that far. Yes, we're going to go that way.
We're going for a ride.
Well, I know, I mean, because on me, there's a swamp back there that's forty feet below the railroad tracks. They want to go through that swamp with a pole.
Sure.
Because that whole thing at the beginning with the trees and everything, oh, we love trees. All them trees that they want to cut down, me, our hundred-year-old oaks and everything. And that whole council, oh, we love trees. And that's, and you have to read in a lot of that, oh, I went through Carver, did you catch the beginning of that?
Well, yeah.
I mean, you can catch, it's still on video, anybody that wants to see it. I went through Carver. Not that I didn't say anything bad about Victoria, but I love downtown Carver.
I would rather live in Carver.
Carver than Victoria. He's slamming Victoria.
We're okay with that.
I know. Yeah, I know. And then he's praising that you guys are doing a good job here, the way you're doing this. And I mean, but he couldn't say that, but he was saying that, you know? And what was the other thing? All of a sudden, he went home. Well, that's a double meaning he's got. Oh, that's what, you know, them trees, and that's why. Great River never said, it was, we'll cut down these trees. Now, all of a sudden, when I brought it to these guys, now all of a sudden, they pushed the poles in my side or in Millner's field. Now, the trees on the line, they ain't touching anymore. So now we're supposed to farm around their poles. They're not going down the line anymore. So, I mean, they're slimy and they're greasy. I don't know if that's right. But I mean, too, and I said, and then he goes, well, what's in it for Victoria? I said, basically, how many houses can you get in a hundred feet or a mile? I said, that transmission line, that's what Victoria's gaining out of this. And this is what Carver's losing. And he goes, um, and then he was just speechless. He was like, oh, oh? You know? So, I mean, that's all right now, tonight, if administrative, everybody just sit down and tell them, Minnesota Valley, what you thought of their experience dealing with them. Because they have a big campaign, you want to get that brochure out, you know? What is it, experiencing?
They have member meetings.
What's that phrase they got?
Oh, it's.
It's something to make every memorable experience with Minnesota Valley nice or something, and I thought, this has not been nice.
Your trusted energy partner creating exceptional member experiences.
Yeah, I, I feel far short there for me.
But that's in there. But today, I was hopeful talking to Mike Dietz, and like, he really, he doesn't get the details. I think he gets GRE's report, and I'm sure it's not complete.
Yeah. So I may volley some of this to Brent, but so you guys testified in the meeting that was since our last meeting, the Public Utilities Commission. And I think you guys did a great job.
No, we didn't.
No, it wasn't polished.
We got told number one, we were number one three times going down there, got honked once, and then we get out amongst the homeless people. I, I, it was, again, it was.
So what I think, and this is where I'm going to volley it to Brent, the way that I understand it is it's going back to the administrative law judge, and they will do more research to figure out if that, and I forget the preferred route that we wanted, D, was it?
No, B.
B, okay. There's a one on the west side.
The one with Kelly Avenue.
Yeah.
If the Kelly Avenue.
And you guys know all your neighbors, you were talking about different farms and parcels and.
And our information for that route came from power linesmen. One from Excel, couple from Minnesota Valley Electric and Chaska.
So our gripe with this from the city's perspective is that all of this happened in a vacuum without us knowing.
And that's what we want you to tell Minnesota Valley Electric.
Yeah, well, they know. I'm going to volley it to you as far as, as far as.
This guy says he has no clue of all of this.
Yeah, but I think what I'm anticipating Brent's going to say is that we're going to more follow the process because it's going through the administrative law judge.
And then.
You know, at the end of the day, we need to have a good relation, you know? Like, I joked about Victoria earlier when you guys said something, we have great relationships with the City of Victoria. The mayor is part of our monthly regular mayor's meetings. The city manager lives in the city of Carver, like, we're good friends. We kind of have to maintain a relationship with Great River Energy. Because at the end of the day, all of Carver's growth is going to put stress on the system, and we need these. We just need to kind of discuss and figure out where the best place for them is.
We're just disappointed that due to Victoria's lack of planning and wait ten years ago, it gets pushed in our problem.
Commissioner on the right, you know, all about keeping Victoria's infrastructure up.
Oh, cartridge.
Yeah, and then all of a sudden, there was a little phrase at the end, so quick trip can build. I don't know if you caught that in there? Up there in eleven, it was supposed to start at the end of May and everything. They haven't, there's a potter there tipped over. They haven't touched anything yet.
Yeah.
Because they don't have enough power, and now I'm finding out they're low on water, Victoria is. They need twelve fifty gallons per minute or something like that, and they only got seven ninety. So, and QuickTrip is supposed to have a car wash in there. Well, if they can't open the car wash, QuickTrip ain't going to build it.
Yeah, I don't know anything about, I know plans for a QuickTrip, but I don't know.
Yeah, but I mean, that's why, and you weren't here, but I went down to that meeting when you annexed Dahlgren, that part up to forty-three, the railroad tracks, that orderly annexation on this side is down here in the old church by the river, twenty, twenty-five years ago, something like that.
Okay.
And Victoria was there, and they were worried about getting landlocked. They wanted Dahlgren township, you know?
That is before my time.
Yeah, I know, but it ain't before, unfortunately, it ain't before my time. And it's like, same thing, and then Victoria's almost defaulted how many times before, you know?
I don't want this to turn into a, a, a Victoria.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, that's why.
But we're, we both have the same concerns. I think we're both looking at this issue through the same lens. It's a NIMBY issue, right?
Yeah, but I mean, that's.
We want to be more planful about where this goes.
Yeah, and that's why I don't, this, what you experienced with Great River Energy, because Minnesota Valley Electric is going, we have no clue this is, there's nothing wrong out there.
So I can share, I'll share three things. One, for those watching, this commentary is related to an application from Great River Energy via Minnesota Valley Electric for a high transmission line through kind of the north side of Dahlgren, township, kind of south of Engler. Two, Joe Green with Minnesota Valley Electric Cooperative was out here with representatives from Great River Energy, and there was, the council did share their disappointment in the process. So I think that I would offer that box has been checked. And then three, I shared an update with the council, the Public Utilities Commission did revert the application back to the administrative law judge for some additional study and record development. And so I would advise the council to work within the framework of that process because that's where the record will be established, where the Public Utilities Commission will get all that information. So I think if we collectively work through that process and avoid maybe some sidebar meetings, or at least from the city perspective, that'll develop the most robust record for the Public Utilities Commission to get all that information. I wouldn't discourage you from having your meeting, but I would advise the city just to work within whatever design process the administrative law judge creates.
So I think we're on the same side of this.
Yeah.
And that side is frustrated, right? Like, this has been a tough process. But we are going to continue to advocate for that option that takes it kind of down the western side versus through our rural area.
And then basically, Victoria's running out of time to get this done, and that's why that whole thing of get it done by January, you know, and that's.
I don't think it's, well, I don't know, but this would take it out of Victoria. I think it was more of the issue with the company and meeting certain deadlines that they needed to meet.
Yeah, I mean.
Happened to that Public Utilities Commission meeting.
But I mean, you said you met with Joe Green, and according to this guy today, he has no clue there's a trouble out here with the power line at all. And what we found out is, they'll say one thing to your face, and there's no report filed back.
And that's why we want to keep it in the process.
Yep.
Yep.
Because if we say, you know, it would be like if you guys were residents of the City of Carver and you had a meeting downstairs and said, hey, we've decided, I'm trying to think of an outlandish example. We decided that we are going to. The cloned sheep. Tear down every tree in the City of Carver, and we're going to start it tomorrow. We got our chainsaws, you know, like, we want to keep within the framework of the rules of this process.
What? What are you talking about?
Yeah.
We have no clue of this.
You know, and.
And that's all I'm saying is make sure, if they tell you something, just don't take it as face value. Make sure everybody knows about this.
Yeah, I kind of think it's a let them. If they don't want to be in the loop, that's fine. There are some really serious meetings that are taking place that's going to determine the future of their vendors that are putting this in, so. We'll keep involved in the process. We're going to keep advocating. We're not going anywhere on this issue, so.
Okay. I'm just making sure everybody's kind of.
Nope, I get it.
Same boat.
No, I appreciate that.
And that's why, when she came down and notified you guys, and I thought, well, that was a lot of good. Didn't hear nothing from you, and all of a sudden, you show up at that first meeting, you go, we didn't know nothing about this until a resident came in. God, I got to talk to this guy, you know?
That was me.
Yeah, you know, and even that, to me, kind of said that, that's no way to do business here.
Yeah. We, it's weird because oftentimes we will hear from residents who aren't happy with something that we're doing. So it's, I think it's a really great experience to be on kind of the other side of the argument to try to band together and fight, and we have all attended meetings, and we have, most of us have given comments and shared testimony in terms of why we don't want this and kind of the supporting points for it and how we weren't involved in the process. And that's really what those folks from the PUC.
I don't think it would have gotten this far if you didn't show your.
Show it up that night.
Yeah.
Because we were losing faith.
Get involved.
Because they do intimidate you, they don't want you coming back to these meetings. You know, even at PUC meeting, you don't even know what I walked into. Room hundred feet long, suits and ties, you know, and I come in blue jeans and, okay, I had dirt under my fingernails, grease on my hands. I thought, you want a farmer down there, you're going to get one, you know, and.
That's why you do the virtual meetings.
That's what I said, then also, the computer locks up.
Mayor Johnson.
And that made, my five minutes are probably.
Mayor Johnson.
But I mean, too, that.
Thank you guys so much for coming.
He wanted us down there.
Yeah. Nope.
You go down there with that dirt on your nails, you let them see you.
Mayor Johnson.
You don't know how intimidated you are, walking in a room with suits and ties and computers and addressing the council, madam council and all this.
Yeah, no, I.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you. Have a good night.
Mayor Johnson, I was just going to say, for the sake of time, can I make a quick request to Mr. Merrick? And that is if you could resend the version or Plan B. I feel like I may have lost track of the different things that were circulating, so, all right. Thank you.
Good evening, Eric.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good. I'm good, thank you. And thank you for not cutting down trees. Hate to see them all go away.
I couldn't think of a crazy idea.
Well, my name's Eric Davinson. I live at two-two-three Carver Creek Place. Tonight, you guys are going to be looking at your, setting your maximum levy for next year. I think you're looking at an eleven point four percent increase in property taxes. Now, I understand, and I do understand, there will be more opportunities to voice concerns and to share opinions about this. But, you know, and I don't want to sound overly cynical, but it's my experience that it's really hard once you get to the end of a process, you're talking, I think, to public hearing sometime in November, you got to get your levies to the county in December. It's really hard to really make any changes and to impact what the levy might look at. So I think it's always better for the public to share their concerns earlier with you than later. So while the county, or later, while you still have a chance to actually debate and address some of the concerns. If you approve increase, the city's share of my property taxes will have increased forty-seven percent, forty-seven percent since two thousand and twenty-three. Forty-seven percent increase. This means that the city council has increased property taxes on an average of about eleven percent annually since two thousand and twenty-three. I don't think this is a sustainable approach to taxing for the city. We do have a stagnating economy. The economy is kind of in flux. I read today that there's about a forty, some sort of a recession or a dip in the market. That's a pretty big risk to be taking at this point in time, to be increasing a levy by about eleven percent. I would much rather see you take the time this year to look at ways to decrease the levy, at least to flatten it out or even possibly reduce it. The better we, until we have a better understanding of where this economy is going, where the housing market is going. I mean, I just talked to a realtor, largely because it's getting really expensive to live out here. And it's, we're at a point now, since I'm retired and I could be retiring very soon, the opportunity to grow income is just not there anymore. So it's hurting especially people who've lived in this community and would like to retire in this community. So what I'm asking at this point is asking what is causing our taxes to increase? What is causing our city property taxes to increase about eleven percent per year? Inflation's at about two point nine percent today. It's been a little higher than that in the past. What are the projections for property taxes over the next five years? I've always wondered why government doesn't do this. Why you don't project out what is your revenue projections, what are your expenses projections over the next five years? So I can take a look at it and say, okay, next year, you're looking at a, or next year, you might be looking at eleven percent, but the following year, you're looking at a four percent, and then it's going to be a six percent and so on. You can project that out. It's not that hard to do.
We do.
I've not seen that.
I'll share our financial plan with you.
Thank you, thank you. And then to start looking at, okay, if we're looking at a challenge in the market right now, and I can tell you what my realtor told me, is that the values, the market has slowed quite a bit for real estate. The value, my neighbor was in a bidding war with his house here three years ago, two years ago, three years ago, I don't know. That is no longer there. It is now becoming more of a buyer's market in this area, especially for existing houses. So I guess the question would be, can we look and see what the levy would be if you just were to say, we're going to do essential services? Until we figure out what's going on with the economy and the housing market, let's put together a proposal for existing, essential services. Is there a way you can restructure some of the spending? I know there's some policies in place where you want to spend, you want to pay a lot of this stuff upfront. Is there a way to actually flatten that out a little bit to, in order to reduce it so we can actually have a flatter levy across the years rather than up and down levy? Are there services or capital expenditures that we can simply live without? I would argue that there have been things in the past that are services that can possibly be reduced. You know, you're on, I think I saw on your, in your docket, my street is on a mill and overlay plan for next year. Is that necessary? Can we push that off for a year? Can we push everything off just a little bit longer until the economy stabilizes up? Now, I would love to have the mill and overlay down my street. Don't get me wrong, because that's going to increase my property value. But I'm also not loving an eleven percent increase, so I understand there's probably some things that could be done to reduce that. So I would really like to see a breakdown of what are the costs of essential services? Take a lot of the stuff out and say, what do we need to do to keep the doors open on the city? What, what is it that you want to do in two thousand and twenty-six versus what can be done at a later time? Like the way I was just talking about. Are there services and expenditures that are discretionary or that can be provided at a lower level? I've got some suggestions in this area, too. You know, I like a lot of the things that you provide, but if you're dealing with a tighter economy, is it necessary to provide these things? What fees are set by statute or what revenues or what fees are set by statutes? And which fees can be revenue generators in order to reduce the budget? You know, I thought it was very, it was very interesting to listen to the perspective of the two people that were here a little bit ago talking about the impact of development that's happening. Are there ways that we should be looking at development a little differently? And ask ourselves, do we want to encourage development? Is it good for the city to encourage development? Is it good for the city to slow it down a little bit? I thought it was interesting that, I didn't realize Victoria was running out of capacity in their water systems. That's kind of a, you know, sign of poor planning, if you ask me. Not that I want to harp on Victoria. So what is the cost benefit analysis? And are we offering incentives, tax incentives such as TIP and other things, to encourage development that are actually we're paying for in the long run? So, you know, neither Mike or I are extravagant spenders. If you've ever seen our place, you know that we don't live, we don't live big. But if you approve an eleven point four percent budget increase, our taxes are going to go up. So what I have to do, and I think I said this in the email I sent to you, what I need to do is find, or we need to do is find a way to spend less so the city can spend a little bit more. I don't have an opportunity to make more money. I can't ask social security, I can't ask my pension. I can't, you know, I can't manipulate the market so I get more money. So if you increase your levy, I've got to decrease my expenditures. And I realize this sounds like a rhetorical question, and we certainly have this discussion in our house all the time. But what would you like us, what would you like me to cut out of my budget so I can give you more money for your budget? Because that's really the question we've got to ask ourselves. So, thank you.
Thanks, Eric. All right, we have no presentations and reports. We don't have any public hearings this evening. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by council member Pasco.
I'll second.
Second by council member Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, over to business items, the two thousand and twenty-six preliminary levy. Ms. Shute.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, council. Tonight, we're here to consider the adoption of Resolution one twenty-nine dash twenty-five to certify the two thousand and twenty-six preliminary tax levy. The certification must be submitted to Carver County by September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. As you know, the importance of the preliminary levy is we're setting the maximum amount of the levy for two thousand and twenty-six. This cannot be increased after tonight. It can only be decreased. This allows a flexibility for further refinement between now and December before final adoption. So as you know, during the budget development process, council has held multiple budget meetings to evaluate the general fund expenditures. Some of these have been estimated because we don't have the exact cost yet. Those would be health insurance and then some other insurance amounts. These discussions have shaped the proposed levy amount that is before you tonight. And as we gather more information in the future, as I said, council would have the option to decrease the budget if they choose to do that. Capital equipment levy transparency. So this is the second year that the city council has chosen to list capital equipment as a separate levy. And we are doing that just for transparency reasons and to show the residents that we are making a dedication to invest the money in capital. We did the same thing with street maintenance. We are showing the residents that the money that we're asking, we are putting back into the streets of the City of Carver. This also helps reduce the general fund balance requirement aligning with our fund balance policy of a minimum of forty percent. This year, a new thing is we're using a strategic debt service adjustment. So our overall levy, we're just taking a shift because we have excess fund balance in a couple of our debt service funds. So we're taking a pause on a couple of those, asking for debt service for those three payments, and we are just shifting the levy. It's a strategic plan. We won't end up with excess fund balance at the end of those debt service payments. So by reallocating the fund balances, we will temporarily, temporarily reduce the debt service, increase the capital equipment levy, but all together, it's the same amount as we would have done originally. When we move on to two thousand and twenty-seven, it will shift back to what we normally would have. So next steps, tonight's action is not budget adoption, but we are setting the maximum levy. Staff will continue to analyze budget conditions and update council with any changes. And a truth and taxation hearing will be held on December first for public input. And then the final budget adoption and tax levy adoption will occur on December fifteenth. I'm open for questions. If you want to see the presentation again, I have the memo here ready to pull up. I know that I have presented a few times, so, and nothing has changed.
Thoughts on seeing the presentation again?
Just feel like, for the benefit of the folks that we have, we never have guests, so because we do. Just feel like for the benefit of the folks that we have, we never have guests, so because we do, uh, who would like to see the presentation, by show of hands? Oh, that's not the way I thought it would go.
Well, I was going to say, I, I don't have to see the presentation, but if you wanted to email it or send it.
It was in the packet.
Oh, the packet that you just had in there.
Yeah, the packet that you responded to and you emailed us.
Okay, I just, I just, I did have a chance to look at that.
We're happy to go through it.
I've, I've seen it.
I looked at the work session, so.
Okay. I really didn't think it would go that way. Okay. Okay, Council, this is our turn. Um, you know, I think, um, so thank you for being here tonight, we thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate, um, that eleven point three four percent, uh, or eleven point three nine percent seems high. But that's kind of, you know, taking a look at it, you said going through and figuring out wants versus needs. That's what we do every year when we do the budget cycle. Um, we have a relationship with staff where they know that we don't want to see the wants. This is a robust budget that has all kinds of needs for the city of Carver. Could we remove some discretionary spending? Absolutely always. What do you want to remove? Cleanup day? Fire protection? Wait, wait, sorry. Sorry, you had your, your time. But we can, you know, cleanup day could go away, the recreational agreement with the Chaska Parks and Rec could go away, prime service could go away, the police coverage for steamboat days could go away. This is all, uh, Lynn did a really great job in the presentation where there is kind of, if we wanted to get down to a certain percentage, how much money we would have to cut out? And then the dollar amounts of what we could go on the chopping block and what could be removed. So I think for me right now, um, because it is a eleven dollar and twenty-five cent increase per month on a average value home in our community, I'm comfortable with setting this at this level right now for the preliminary levy. I'm always a little bit worried and I feel like I've been doing this long enough to know that we will occasionally get an October surprise. And I want to make sure that we're in a good place. I also, um, want to set it at this point, we will have our next public hearing on the budget will happen in, at our first meeting in December. Um, and that's when everybody will have their property tax statements in hand. So they will have an idea of what their impact will be based on their home's unique value. Unfortunately, it's not as much of a science of saying it's going to be exactly this. There's a little bit of guesswork that's involved in it at this point until we see those property tax statements. So, um, I, I am in favor of moving forward with this budget.
Chrissy?
Is somebody, okay. I don't want to jump again, I, I don't want to jump in front of anyone. So I, I hear what you're saying. Um, how much do you have to give up of your income that now goes to the city income? Um, or what the city needs? Um, it is a hard budget. I, it's a hard budget for me every year to go through because I see as it goes up, it affects people and it affects people who may have a tighter income than others. And we, I think it's always prudent to remember that although someone in our, in our community may be making X amount, triple, four digits, triple digits, um, that we, that not everyone does. And that as, as you have said, when you go into, um, the time of retirement, um, you start to see that you're, you're, you're being able to have that income, to grow the income at this point, it, it levels off. And how do you stay in a community that you've lived in for a number of years? I don't know how many. Um, but do, are we, uh, how are we pricing people out of this community? Is it happening? What does that look like? Growth communities are difficult. They're very, very difficult because all of the new has to come in to support, um, everything that's coming for the future because we can't just say, okay, we put up three hundred houses, developer bought the land, they're within everything and the, and the, um, annexation agreement that we have. And all of a sudden we say, well, great, these houses come in, but we can't, now we don't have water for these homes. Or we don't have sewer capacity for these homes, or whatever that capacity looks like. So I think it's, um, it's definitely a balancing act. I looked back at, and I'm looking at what we have here in our packet for the last couple of years and what that, um, that tax increase was. And we were much lower in 2023. Uh, the world was pretty shut up, you know, just coming out of a really shut up time. Um, and then things started booming and so we have come down some, obviously, in what our increases have gone, twenty-four, twenty-five, proposed twenty-two, twenty-six. I agree with having a levy knowing that this is the outside number. And I generally have.
Ceiling number, right?
The ceiling number, yep, sorry, the ceiling number of our levy. And year to year, I have generally had issues with, um, the tax rate or the percentage and how things are raising. But I do understand that things come up and we can't leave ourselves short either in case something does come up. We are waiting for a few things, we're waiting for our health insurance, which seems like that would be a small number. It actually has quite a, a significant percentage amount in here when we get that back to find out. We can only speculate on that right now. Lynn, can you say when you're expecting those numbers to come in?
It's usually toward the end of October.
Okay. And then we're currently looking at the different transit options that we have, uh, for the community and what that can look like in the future. We continue funding prime or there are other options out there that, um, we've been discussing countywide. Uh, I, um, I think in the past I have, I have stated my issues with the park and rec agreement that we have with Chaska for the amount that we pay for what we get back. Not because I think that the, what they do provide here isn't good for the, we do have some things and when they do do them, generally they're, they're just fine. Um, and it does add a subsidy to Carver folks to go to the Chaska Community Center and the golf course and their rec programs and things at a discounted rate. But for me, we're still paying a large amount of money that not every, that doesn't apply to every resident to get a subsidized rate there. Now, I understand that the families who use it enjoy it or the people who use it for, um, you know, whether it's the exercise room or whether it's the childcare there, that, that is helpful to them. I personally don't feel that, uh, it's equitable to all of our residents because not all of our residents in Carver proper are using it. I also think that the city of Chaska, while we pay them night, I'm sorry, I don't have the number here as we're flipping through. Do you have the number for the, is it nine D three nine? Ninety-three, ninety-three thousand dollars that we're paying to the city of Chaska. On top of that, they are also, um, keeping the, the additional revenues because this doesn't cover your entire membership at the Chaska Rec Center or your entire childcare. So we're spending almost a hundred thousand dollars of our tax money to pay Chaska to have them also have revenue from our, from our residents who are using it. There's a flip there, we don't, we can't offer all of that to our community at this time. But I do, and now that they're going into all of their renovations and things that they're doing at the community center, how much more are they going to ask every year? How high do we go? When do we say, that's enough? You either take ninety-three or we do take nothing. Do you want that or do, do not? Because I just think that they're kind of running this right now and they're saying, here's the number. Great, take it. Um, so I want the two people in the audience and anyone who's watching to know that I look at these things very closely. I know the rest of the Council looks at these very closely and I often come back to what, what does this look like? I'm one person on here. I mean, I'm sure the other council members will have different ideas on different aspects of the budget as well. So I'm not going to go on forever. Um, I do want to say though, I really truly, one hundred percent, look at this as this is the ceiling, this is the top. And whatever we can do to come back from that top, I will work to do and I will be looking to see what we can, can do. I don't mean to say that any council or staff wouldn't be, isn't and won't be doing the same thing. But I think from my past years on the Council, I have generally seen that we have been able to come down a little bit as we get a little bit farther into it. But we, we have to be careful that we don't, you know, cut off our nose to spider face and that we're too early and now we can't go back and something major has come up. So that is my long diatribe about that. Those are the, those are the three things that, um, kind of, those are the things that, uh, that really kind of get to me. There's a couple of those, I guess, extras that we have. But again, we are, really, we are waiting for the health insurance to come back, that will help. And then I think some more transit discussions are very, uh, are very prudent for this group to have before we finalize this levy in the end. Thank you.
Ken?
Um, I agree with much of what council member Conrad, um, has stated. For me, I've heard, I've heard concerns from residents who are retirees on multiple fronts. I know my neighborhood, um, is a third to a half retirees. And they moved to Carver, you know, five, six years ago. And as property taxes go up and their incomes stay the same, there are some real concerns there. I am very much looking forward to digging into this once we have all of the information in front of us to try and reduce this as much as possible. My big concern going into the final levy process is that we don't have health insurance numbers. And we have seen over the years that there can be huge swings in how much health insurance costs. And that's one of the biggest things that drives the, our budget is the benefits and salaries of our staff, which is really important. Um, and especially with some of the whisperings that are coming out of the health insurance market right here, we're looking at probably some pretty major increases for the next year. Um, so with all of that in mind, I want to approve generally a levy that I am less comfortable with on the high end right now, knowing that we'll be working to bring it down, but that we also have given ourselves room so that we can deal with those health insurance costs without sacrificing some of those things that are essential services. Um, you know, essential services aren't just keeping the lights on in City Hall, they're snowplows. They're, you know, they're making sure, you know, you said mill and overlay. One of the big things that the City Council has done that I really respect, and I'm the newest member, so I'm still kind of getting it under my feet. But they have made a really robust plan to make sure that we are not costing the city big dollars long term by taking short sighted, uh, opinions now. And mill and overlay is one of those big ones. If you catch a mill and overlay now, it's about a, what, fifth or a tenth of the cost of a full reclamation? What's the number there, Brent?
So double.
Double.
The cost of a mill and overlay is typically double for a reclamation?
And it can be one season between a mill and overlay and a reclamation. And I've seen that one year on this council. And I've only been on this council for nine months. So, um, you know, it's things like that that seem non-essential now that end up costing the city big dollars in the future. So I'm looking forward to when we get our final numbers, those final budget numbers, being able to dig into where we can make cuts. Um, but right now I am happy with a slightly higher levy, knowing that there is at least a possibility this year in particular that those health insurance numbers are going to come back really high.
Lauren?
Uh, I agree with, um, the Mayor and the other council members of, just to respond to some of the comments is, I, to me, it's important that we be good stewards of what we own and or are responsible for. So this, the pavement, street management plan, um, is part of that. Um, and as well as planning for growth. Um, I really like, early in the process, we've, I was looking at my notes, July, August, and how we got those numbers about some things that some people might think aren't essential. You know, the cleanup days, the extra patrol, or you know, there's the various things. As we're always able to ask and say, okay, remind me or like, show me again, how much do we pay? So it's like anything that we've asked, they've been able to come back and say, this is what we get, this is what's in the budget. So every year you see just a little something change. But, um, I feel confident that we have good visibility into each line item. And if we wanted to dig into it, we can. So that's why I feel very confident about where we're at. Um, I do want to ask, uh, uh, Mrs. Shutey, just to clarify. So the, the motion in front of us for that dollar amount, that's the eleven point three nine proposed ceiling. Okay. This, I want to make sure I still do like the same percentage. And, um, this also is the no new debt services for 2026. Yeah, so I think that's a huge win for the city. With those things, I do support it.
All right, we don't have anybody else left here to say the same thing again?
Yeah, I know.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
For at that point, uh, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution one twenty-nine dash twenty-five certifying the 2026 preliminary tax levy in the amount of five million, four hundred fifty-eight dollars and nine hundred thirty-three dollars.
Motion by council member Sarah.
Um, second the motion.
Second by council member Pasco. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post, motion passes. All right. Um, again, that's the preliminary levy. We will know more in November when we get our property tax statements in the mail. And we will have a public hearing at our first meeting in December, so. This isn't really a public comment.
No, just a question.
Can you follow up with the email, do you mind? Or we can chat at the end?
Other than this, is there going to be an opportunity for a discussion about this at any time? Or is it going to be all public hearings?
Public hearing, so yes and no. Discussion is always available. Tap any one of us on the shoulder on our way out of here. Um, email us again, we'll continue to get you answers to your questions and any information that you want to know. The public hearing, the format of a public hearing, and it's, it's tough because it's got to be standardized. But people come in, much like you did tonight, say your piece, and then we digest it. We used to do, this is more information than what you want to know, Eric. But we used to do it where we did a public hearing and then we voted on the, uh, the budget that same night. Probably a handful of years ago, we started doing the public hearing in one night. And then we kind of digested it and kind of staff took direction based off of the comments that we received from there. And then we made the decision on the final levy at our second meeting in December. We're going to continue to do that process, um, this year. Where we'll do the public hearing, we'll take all the feedback from the public. And then we will digest it, synthesize it, give staff direction on what we want to see based off of what we hear. And then the decision on the budget will be made two weeks later. So, all right. Um, moving on to the design development professional services for the future public services facility.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, uh, tonight we'll be talking about, uh, design development for public services. Uh, at your August fourth meeting, the Council authorized proceeding with that phase of the project. Uh, and just as a reminder, designing development is a pre-construction activity. So you're not, uh, in line for a, a date or moving forward. It's essentially a process to develop what the Council and the community participated in with the space study or space assessment and make it into a project that can be reviewed by the Council, reviewed by the community. It'll give you a layout of the building, some views, uh, but probably most importantly, refine cost estimates. Uh, having Andrew and his team, uh, participated kind of, and along with the Council developing that. As a part of that process, the, the Council adopted six guiding principles for that design development that are listed in your packet. Uh, we also had, uh, two of the three major phases of design development. Uh, architectural and construction management, those services represented by Ortell and Tara. Construction at your August, um, excuse me, at your previous Council meeting in, uh, September, at your September second meeting. Um, connected with this overall project, uh, the Council at your August eighteenth meeting approved a purchase agreement for about twenty-two acres of land owned by Bruce and Nancy Jerrison. Uh, there's a, a public hearing related to the financing portion that will be coming up at your August, excuse me, August, October sixth meeting, lots of dates here. Um, so there's two contracts in your packet for review. One related to Ortell for architectural, one related to Tara for, uh, construction, uh, management services. Um, engineering services is provided under our existing, uh, agreement with Bolton and Make for Civil Engineering. I'm going to pop this, uh, screen up on the, her, my screen up here. Um, just kind of want to review kind of the financial pieces here. So, uh, architectural, uh, so that's related to kind of building design, uh, structural design. Uh, the Council had mentioned some pieces related to, um, sustainability, uh, solar, et cetera. Uh, so that's about eight hundred and thirty-one thousand. Uh, Tara Construction is, uh, essentially discounting, uh, their construction management services. So this initial phase of design development is at fifteen thousand. And then civil engineering, uh, for two hundred and five thousand. So that's related to kind of citing the space survey work, um, stormwater management, which, uh, you all are familiar with as can be a significant piece in the development of a property. Um, using kind of the Council's direction, um, both embedded and within the strategic plan and just in budget discussions, there's been a, a desire to avoid, uh, debt as relates to equipment certificates. Um, taking that same strategy, uh, we're giving the Council an option or a scenario. Taking that same strategy, uh, we're giving the council an option or a scenario to, uh, pay for design development services, uh, just over a million dollars in cash. Using the, kind of, the, the theory that, uh, there is an option to do an interfund loan, but in some circles, that could be viewed as kind of a, when you have that billion-dollar obligation to pay off, sometimes that inadvertently puts stress to move forward with a project at a certain time to pay back those, uh, that debt service. Because the only way you pay that off theoretically is through taking out a bond for that bigger project. You could pay it off through, uh, levy work or levies, uh, going forward. Uh, but, uh, we've spent a lot of time, and Lynn mentioned it in her presentation for the preliminary levy. We have three hundred and eighty-two thousand approximately dollars within the twenty-twenty-six budget that's reallocated from debt service and put into, uh, the facility CIP. The thing that I would say that it's a little outside of the box that we, we've verified our ability to do this through, uh, our bond council and our auditor. We have, when Levi Griffin Road was constructed back in twenty-eleven, uh, the majority of that project was outside of city limits, and frankly, uh, with the exception of United Properties, recent annexation is still out of city limits. Mills Fleet Farm prepaid their assessment, so they were done, they owned the south side and the north side of the road. There are three remaining properties that had deferred, um, assessments until they were gonna be annexed. Because those properties haven't annexed, the city has been paying approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per year out of, in its debt service levy to fund that debt. So, in essence, kind of prepaying on those assessments. What this strategy would do with the, uh, annexation of United Properties and that anticipated payment sometime in twenty-twenty-six, uh, you would apply that payment, and instead of putting it towards that as an assessment, since that has theoretically already been paid over the last close to fifteen years, you would be placing it, um, to be used as paying in cash, if you will, um, the design, uh, design development costs. And as you can see, uh, the one point one million covers, uh, the one million fifty-one thousand. So, you'd theoretically be whole, you'd be through the design development process, and not, uh, have an obligation to pay off, uh, unless you proceeded with a project at some point in the future. Again, you would have an opportunity to say, "No, we don't wanna do that. We're gonna apply that to the Levi Griffin Road project." And then say, uh, "We're gonna do a, uh, similar one point one million dollar interfund loan from the sanitary sewer fund." And I, we'd, Lynn and I would have to do some analysis on what would, the right fund would be, uh, to do that in consultation with, uh, Northland. So, that's kind of the finance, and I can walk through any of that specifically. I know that's, it worked in my mind, and it took me several times to explain it to everybody in the right way for it to like land. So, uh, if it doesn't kind of quite hit, I'm happy to kind of review that again. I have your packet. You have the proposals from Ortel and Terra, as well as Bolton and Mink. And then the contracts were, uh, prepared, uh, by the city attorney, Dave Anderson. So, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions? Emotions?
I'll make a motion to approve an agreement with Ortel Architects for Design Development Services.
And a motion by councilmember Conrad?
I'll second.
Second by councilmember, uh, Sarah. Name down, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve an agreement with Terra Construction for Design Development Services.
Motion by councilmember Conrad?
I'll second.
Second by councilmember Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. Right.
Just one more thing, Mayor, and I'm not sure if this was, I think Dave hasn't, we would bring back a resolution, I think, to kind of clarify the financing. Is that what you were gonna ask?
Well, I was gonna ask Brent, um, thanks, Mayor and council, um, just if there, if you needed separate council approval for Bolton and Mink's proposal, which is in there as well. These were just for the other two agreements, and I know there was a separate proposal from Bolton and Mink in your presentation. So, I wasn't sure if you needed them to give you direction on that.
I defer to you. I, I assume that it was kind of under their kind of, um, regular city engineering work, but if you think it's appropriate, I'm happy to.
I think just a formal motion to proceed with Bolton and Mink's proposal is sufficient at this point. I just wanna make sure we don't miss that, if there's any need.
Yeah.
All right, I got it. I'd like to make a motion to approve civil engineering services proposal from Bolton and Mink.
Motion by councilmember Conrad?
I'll second.
Second by councilmember Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes.
So, this one follow-up, since this was related to that, so when we, when we get the payment from United Properties for that Levi Griffin Road, Lynn and I work together and get a resolution, just so you can be, because it's such a large sum of money, we wanna be on the record for that.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you. All right, council communications, and then we also skipped council requests during the work session, so if you have any. Haley, you wanna go first?
No communications, uh, just a big thank you to everyone who helped to make River City Days such a success this year. Sorry, River City Days. Steamboat Days. They do a great job there. Steamboat Days, Steamboat Days. I'm gonna blame the baby. Yes. I'm sleep deprived and, yes, no, Steamboat Days, that made Steamboat Days such a success this year.
Well, speaking of Steamboat Days, Kristy, what, go next?
Well, we had Steamboat Days in Carver. It was good. It was cold. Um, we wanna say, since we're in this setting, um, as the manager of the event, I wanna say thank you to the city staff for all that they do to help, uh, whether it comes from agreements or getting cones out, whatever it might be. Public Services has done a great job. Obviously, Vicky and Dave worked on some contracts with fireworks and things like that. We had to deal with a little bit of a different area, looking area for fireworks, and we got that taken care of, too. If we could've had maybe thirty more degrees on Saturday night, we would've been fine, 'cause you could, everyone could see their breath, including the singer of the band.
They kept saying, oh, no, that was Friday night. They kept saying, "It's great to be in Maconia."
Did they?
I almost called you, 'cause I was like, "Somebody better temper."
Oh, I didn't hear that. I would've stopped there. And I was listening to the band most of the time, but we'll just leave it at that. So.
Maybe I wasn't.
Yeah. Uh, we, and then the sheriff's office, I know we worked kind of hard with them this year. Um, I, I, again, the crowds were a little bit smaller because the weather was, uh, cold on Saturday, but when it came to what I have to deal with on the parade morning and having cars moved and streets closed and things like that, it went much more smoothly than it has any year that we've done this, so that is fantastic. So, again, thanks to all city staff, um, 'cause so many people had a hand in it. Um, I will say thank you to the Steamboat Days Committee also, because, um, they work very hard for, as a small group throughout the year, so. Uh, my only other thing is that I, uh, didn't, wasn't able to attend the HPC meeting, but I am going to be at the Business Alliance meeting this Friday morning. Lauren, can you remind me what time that is here? Eleven AM, so.
Come hungry and the hands always be straight.
All right, that's all I have.
Lauren?
Uh, no updates or communication today.
All right, I have a bunch. So, we talked a little bit, um, about the Public Utilities Commission meeting. I sent out an email kind of with the highlights of that. But, and I, so it's wild to see other commissions and other forms of government. This meeting, Commissioner Tuma kind of took the lead in it, and he was talking directly to me, and thanking us for expressing our concerns. He was really shocked and upset that we weren't included in the decision-making process, which is great to hear, 'cause we felt the same way. But he kind of walked me through and helped me understand the process. In short, the Cliff Notes version is this is going back to the administrative law judge, and they will make a decision that have a finding and then report back to the Public Utilities Commission. Does that sound right? You're not tracking, or you, you don't remember?
I don't remember, sorry.
Oh, okay, I was like. There's a gentleman coming up. Two residents, and then, um, Jeff Thompson from Dogren Township was also there. It's a little bit of a bummer, because he was trying to speak, and he was in this meeting room, and he kept messaging. I was emailing the administrator, and he didn't get a chance to speak until the end of the, the hearing. And he was a little disappointed that he didn't really get his option to speak, and I'm not sure what the snap was, because it was really clear that he was messaging. I sent a couple of emails. So, that was one thing. I sent a link, in the email that I sent, there's the link to the Public Utility Commission's decision. There's the recorded meeting. The thing that was really, um, noteworthy in that is another one of the commissioners that very, towards the end of their discussion, um, kind of took the applicant and kind of gave them the grandma finger, which is what we call this in my family, but said like, "Hey, these are residents in our communities." Because I think the Englands had mentioned, like, "We're being told we're just um farmers and we don't count," which like hurts my heart a little bit. But he kind of took them to task and said, "Listen, you gotta remember that these are the communities that you live, you know, these people live there. You are just here to do a project, and you need to treat them appropriately." And I forget what the words were, and he was so much more eloquent than I just was. Um, but he really took them to task, and I think Brent and I were like, "Whoa."
Somebody just got scolded.
So, that was noteworthy as well. But I think, um, more to come on this. It did not go the way I thought it would, in that I was anticipating it was gonna come to some kind of conclusion. The conclusion is to be continued, so.
Did you guys have any questions on that?
Mayor, can I just jump in related to that?
Yeah.
There is, there's a comment made by, um, Mr. Ayden tonight, what, I just want to clarify. There's no reason to believe that Victoria is experiencing any issues with the water, was repeated later by another resident. We've been on the other end of misinformation. If people have questions related to water, they should go directly to and call Victoria City Hall, but I have not heard that, and I don't want that to, um, spread like somehow that's a matter of fact, uh, without just addressing it and saying there's no reason to believe that is occurring.
Thank you for saying that. That was a little bit of an uncomfortable moment, and I don't wanna be the one to tell a resident that they're wrong publicly in a meeting like this. Um, so, thank you for mentioning that. I really appreciate that. Let's see, on, uh, September fourth, I had mayor's office hours during Steamboat Days. I had a decent turnout, 'cause it was a warm place to come in, uh, during Steamboat Days. Let's see, Steamboat Days weekend, it was always well-done and so much fun, despite the cooler temperatures, which I thought was gonna bring on more people than if it was like sweltering and hot, but it didn't appear to.
The night was so cold.
Yeah, it was a little chilly. On September ninth, I visited Carver's newest business. Uh, it's Ivy Aesthetics Med Spa. The owner is Brittany. They have one location right now in Janhassen, and then this is their second location that they're opening up. They are just on the southwest corner of the roundabout, in between Chiropractic Specialists of Carver and Healing Hands Veterinary Clinic. So, um, they specialize in providing, this is from their website, the highest-quality aesthetic injectables along with IV vitamin therapy. So, they've got three treatment rooms. She gave me a little bit of a, a tour. And if you guys had been in there with the previous user, you, the space looks completely different. It's very, very different from what was in there, um, and is very like gram-worthy. So, very nice-looking, um, business that she's built for herself. Also, on Tuesday, I went to the HPC meeting. The theme of the evening was window replacements. Um, one was approved because it was wood and kind of original materials. The other was not, because they wanted to put in a vinyl window. So, um, good to see that the HPC is kind of doing the right thing in terms of not allowing those vinyl windows. On the tenth last week, we had the ribbon cutting at Carver Place, which is providing sixty units of affordable housing in our community, um, and was really cool. Not only was it the ribbon cutting for Carver Place, but it was also the, I think it was the forty-fifth anniversary of the CDA. Um, so, celebrating that anniversary with them, um, I invited everyone who was on city council in twenty-fifteen. That's the council that made the decision for Carver Crossing, and I firmly believe that we would not have had a river, uh, river cutting for Carver Place, had they not made the decision that they made. So, Mike Webb showed up, Glenn Henry showed up, Jim Wiegand showed up, um, and then Reed was there as well. I also invited the, the council members who had a role in the planning process for that. So, um, that was fun. Also went through and did a tour. There are one, two, and three-bedroom units in there. Um, and just some of the nicest apartments that I have ever seen, in-unit washers and dryers. It's a really nice building. There's a workout room, you name it. Let's see, last Friday on September twelfth, there was the SWCTC meeting. We went, that's the Southwest Quarter Transportation Coalition meeting. We went over the Arboretum Transportation Plan. Um, we heard from Eric Hanson at Southwest Transit, and then we got a legislative update. So, the next couple of years where there's kind of been, um, road construction kind of all over the place in the county, it's really gonna focus on the Arboretum and Highway Five for the next two years, and what's.
Also, we'll only have maybe one section of detour and not one hundred?
I think selfishly, but from a Carver perspective, which is applicable, it has been tough to get through Chaska to get to two-twelve this summer. It has been tough, as we've talked about, to get to Victoria this summer, you know, like, I think. For those of us in our little bubble, I don't know that that's gonna have as much of an impact, unless you're looking to get to the Arboretum, so, uh, but that is coming. And then, um, on Sunday, yesterday, I did a hike to the cheesecake. So, had about ten people join me, and, um, I planned it intentionally for the weekend after Steamboat Days, because traditionally, the weather always drops off, and it's a little bit of a cooler day. It was not yesterday. It was lucky, but we all made it, so it was, uh, it was good to see some folks doing that, so. That is it for me. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And a motion by councilmember Conrad.
I'll second.
And a second by councilmember Sarah. Any further, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. Good evening.